Good evening. Welcome to the Costa Mesa Planning Commission meeting for Monday, April 11, 2022. I call the meeting to order and ask Commissioner Vivar to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar, very much. Okay, Anna, roll call, please.
Chair Deerekel.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Here.
Commissioner Toller.
Here.
Commissioner Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Vivar.
Here.
Commissioner Erith.
President.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no announcements or presentations on the agenda this evening, which brings us to public comment. Public comment is for opportunity for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on matters within our jurisdiction but are not listed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anyone in the public wishing to speak during public comment? Again, this is on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one in chambers, Anna, do we have anyone on Zoom or telephone?
No, we do not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment. Brings us to Commissioner comment. We'll begin with Commissioner Rojas.
I have no comment at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Erith.
Thank you, Chair. I will make one comment this evening. I just want to share some good news. My college, the University of South Carolina, their women's basketball team just won the national championship, and I'm over the moon right now. So, go Carolina. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't blame you. Carolinas did well in basketball this year. Commissioner Toller.
I do have a short presentation tonight, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay. While we're getting those slides ready, I'll just say that I'm very appreciative of you guys' patience as we go through this. I think I'm trying not to be too obnoxious in doing this too often and making them too long, but I think this is a good time to talk about these things. This is town hall, and it's a good stuff to talk about, so. Oh, here we go. So, on St. Patrick's Day just a few weeks ago, the world of architecture and planning and design was shocked to hear of the passing of a great mind, Christopher Alexander. I don't know too much about him, but I know that he wrote The Pattern Language, and this is a book that has greatly influenced planning and design and architecture in the last 50 years, 40 years. And it's one of my favorite books in my library. I find myself flipping through it as a reference several times a month, if not weeks, and so I just take this opportunity to share with you some of my favorite principles. So what he does in this book, he takes 250-something principles of the built environments, ranging from the scale of the region to the window in your bedroom, and weaves them all together. So I just took five or six, and I'm going to try to kind of maybe plant some seeds. If you guys haven't heard of this book, I encourage you to look it up. So this was written in 1977. Like I said, he was kind of ahead of his time. He was a kind of a thought leader that a lot of his writings led to what ended up being the New Urbanism and some other movements. Principle 140 is kind of a segue from my last presentation where I was arguing that the public realm, or streets, should be framed by not walls, not sides or backs of buildings, not bushes, but the fronts of buildings with windows and doors. And he takes it a little more specifically here and talks about private terraces on the street. So he says, "The relationship of a house to a street is often confused. Either the house opens entirely to the street and there is no privacy, or the house turns its back on the street and communion of the street life is lost." So he argues that there's a proper relationship between the public realm and private space. So here's a little diagram, kind of like we were looking at last week, or last time I had a presentation, where there is supposed to be some sort of relationship between the people in public space and in private space. So you apply that to our zoning codes, and at some scales, this is easier to fix than others, but instead of this, we should be doing this sort of thing. So look at these two pictures. Which would you rather walk down, be in? Which is a place worth caring about, right? It's a simple principle. This is one of my favorite city-country fingers. Every city dweller, if this were implemented, would have access to the countryside. The open country would be a half-hour bicycle ride from downtown. So we have Fairview Park, Talbert Canyon Park, these really cool open spaces. On the Newport side, we have Back Bay, and I've always thought that these are great wild places that you can escape to from, you know, the kind of urban environments that we're used to every day. And I don't know if anybody's thought about how they connect, but I saw this in a book I was reading on the history of Costa Mesa. So Robert Wilson talked about the Costa Mesa Green Belt. He says it starts at the mouth of the Santa Ana River, Fairview Park, Costa Mesa Golf Club, Fairview Developmental Center, OCC, Costa Mesa High School, the fairgrounds, Santa Ana Country Club. So you could see kind of that arc, how those do kind of make a green belt. It's really cool what we have here. This is, some of these more than others, some of these are fenced off or paved with asphalt, but there is potential there to have wildness close to everybody, which I think is really cool. And I think this, I don't think it made it into the general plan, and I would hate to see this opportunity squandered. I think it still is an opportunity for us. It is in this context that Christopher Alexander said, "When the countryside is far away, the city becomes a prison." Relatedly, green streets. He says there's too much hot, hard asphalt in the world, and I think we all know what he means by that. This is the R1 environment that there's so much angst over. And it's not a bad street. This is a street that I think most of us kind of live on. This is a good one. You can see there's a couple basketball hoops. But when you look at it, if you're like me, it's kind of, it's not great, and something about it feels a little off. And to me, one is just the lack of people. There's just not enough people that live on this street to give it any life, and it seems a little desolate. The second thing, Christopher Alexander's right, there's just too much hot, hard asphalt. It's over-engineered for the 50 people that live on that street. Kenneth T. Jackson, in his book, The Crabgrass Frontier, another classic, said, "There are few places as desolate and lonely as a suburban street on a hot afternoon." And I think it's because of those two reasons I just cited. Here, like I said, Christopher Alexander was one of the thought leaders that led to the New Urbanism, and the New Urbanism, its flagship town was Seaside, Florida. This was built in the 90s, and this is a residential street, similar to the one we just looked at. On the left, that's a center median, this gravel, that's a parking lane, and cars go up and down this street, but which one would you rather be on? There's too much hot, hard asphalt in the world, and I think this is something we need to think about. Are we over-engineering everything? Children in the City, Principle Number 57. If children are not able to explore the whole of the adult world around them, they cannot become adults. But modern cities are so dangerous that children cannot be allowed to explore them freely. Now, I don't know if it's crass to use a meme from up here, but I think it does help the coin drop for a lot of people. Why don't kids go outside anymore? Well, you know, this isn't our city. This could be a lot of places in Orange County. This is in Atlanta. This is called Belt Line. It's not that complicated of a concept, but they just made a right-of-way, they made a street where cars aren't allowed. And they've been building this for the last 20 years, but from 2005 to 2019, they've invested $600 million in it, and it's attracted over $6 billion of private investment. Everybody wants to live on this sort of thing. I bring that up because Christopher Alexander's application of this principle of children being allowed in the city, he makes it a little more specific than necessary, but he says there should be a loop through the city, a child-friendly, bikeable route that goes through spaces where there's industry and commerce happening, where there's windows and eyes on the street that can kind of keep them safe. And I think this also illustrates the principle that I think we'd be wise to remember, especially as we're going to densify over this next housing cycle. Density and open space are not incompatible. Density and calmness and quietness and beauty and nature are not incompatible. Here's the one that's a little less fancy. This is somewhere else in the South. But look, you got apartments there, but who wouldn't want to live on that? We're wrapping up. Old people everywhere, kind of the same principle. Old people need old people, but they also need the young, and young people need contact with the old. How can we get more old people integrated into our neighborhoods and into our city and not just out of everyone's way in convalescent homes? ADUs is a good start. Legalizing ADUs was a good step, I think, for our city. Missing middle housing, so small units integrated into our existing neighborhoods. We don't need to be afraid of small apartments as long as we get our development codes so that they come in well, they come into scale, matching the character of the environment. Little studios in here, empty nesters can stay in their, you know, the place they've lived, where their kids live. They don't have to leave their neighbors and go somewhere else. You get a place for grandma to live in there and be part of a neighborhood and be part of society still. And, you know, as we scale up in certain places, obviously, this isn't appropriate for an R1 environment in the middle of a street, but there are plenty of places in Costa Mesa where this sort of thing. Flats above amenities would be great for elder people. Last one, mini buses. And I know a lot of other people have been talking about this, I've been hearing. He was kind of ahead of his time, Christopher Alexander. He says establish a system of small taxi-like buses carrying up to six people, radio-controlled. Now, this is 1977, but this is no big deal with apps nowadays, right? As we think about densifying, as we grow as a city, we need to figure out how to reduce auto-dependency. Now, I live in the East Side. If I want to go to the beach, if I want to go to South Coast Plaza, if I want to go to Sobeka, if I want to go to the MetroLink station in Santa Ana, how do I get there? I can't take the bus. Any of those places I cited, I have to take two buses, and it just doesn't work. I can't bike to those places. It's not comfortable enough. We got to figure out creative ways to get people around, to allow people to become less car-dependent, to facilitate one-car families, and to allow, you know, teenagers to get around and not be so anxious to get their driver's license and start tearing up our roads. So here's one in Japan, here's one in Rome. I think this is what people are thinking about, local circulators, to kind of fill that gap between regional transit and nothing else. Here's one in Laguna. Every beach city, I think, in Orange County has one of these, and they're extremely popular. This is the closest one to what Christopher Alexander was talking about, just a small on-call service. But anyway, that's it. Those are some of my favorites that he's put forward, and I hope, maybe I planted a couple seeds, and you guys have a new book to look into. But thank you, Mr. Chair, those are all.
Thank you, Commissioner Toller, very much. And I'll have a quick couple of comments. Commissioner Vivar.
There you go. Yes, sure. Yeah, great presentation there, Commissioner Toller. Great to kind of bring that to mind. I'm not sure if anybody here remembers seeing the movie Cars, but there's a scene in which they're up on, like, the main protagonist and another character are up on a kind of cliff and looking down at what's supposed to be, I think it's somewhere California or New Mexico, but basically they're seeing highways, highways going through the landscape as opposed to winding around with it and going through it. The character Sally says something that streets and roads became places to get through rather than places to be in, and sometimes that's what's happened with our communities as well. You know, cities and streets are places that we get through rather than places that we are in. And part of this is because, again, everybody's in cars. Sure, it's pretty difficult to get around, you know, in our cities without having a car. I myself can't drive, so sometimes it is a bit frustrating when I'm not able to get places on my own as easily as I would like. So having this vision for the future in which we further develop our public transportation networks, working with OCTA and other agencies to develop paratransit services or light rail services, expanding active transportation. I sit on the Active Transportation Committee here in the city of Costa Mesa, and we're doing great things for the city in terms of planning for more opportunities for safe bike lanes, safe places to walk. And yeah, so just great to keep that in mind. The city of Costa Mesa also has been having community bike rides for a while and community walks that are now starting up. Myself and Arlis Reynolds, council member, have been planning a few more routes. And yeah, one of the things that people kept saying on this community walk is, wow, you know, I never saw that place before, or I don't remember really seeing this, you know, business before, this little green area as we walked through the city. So oftentimes, even those of us who grew up in Costa Mesa and have been here for many, many years, still don't really know the city that well, but having these opportunities to bike through and walk through the communities in our city, we're able to discover a lot more of what Costa Mesa has to offer. So I encourage everybody to, you know, get out there and participate in community bike rides and community walks and just, yeah, think a little bit about what Commissioner Toller has said, and, you know, some of these ideas really come to mind when we're able to walk through communities and bike through as opposed to driving through them. Yeah, but those are all the comments. For me, Mr. Chairman, I am going to speak next week on Monday at Costa Mesa High with a fellow Active Transportation Committee member to the students and get students, again, excited about public service and about the importance of civic engagement. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all for me tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. Commissioner Russell.
I don't have any comments tonight, thank you.
Vice Chair Zick.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay. Just real quick, your presentation, Commissioner Toller, and just the comments Commissioner Vivar just made are why I'm excited to see new blood coming up on commissions and the young folks in Costa Mesa starting to kind of take leadership roles and put forward visions for the city that they, their generation and their kids, they want to grow up in. The reason why I'm encouraging Commissioner Toller and any of the commissioners actually to make comments about their thoughts on future planning with the city is because there's going to be a prime opportunity next year, or beginning next year after the Housing Element is, well, this year actually, but after the Housing Element is adopted, where we're going to need to do a general plan update to bring all the other elements of the general plan into kind of in conformance of the Housing Element and vice versa. But also, there'll be a significant zoning code update, and that's going to be the time when all you young folks who have visions for how we might look at and plan for future growth in the city and future residents is really going to come to bear. So getting all your thoughts and some of your ideas and your visions and getting visuals up on the record as we approach that is going to be very helpful, I think, for the commission in the future and for staff as you tackle all those things. So keep it up. I'm very encouraged by the creativity that's up here and looking forward to seeing what you guys produce in the years ahead. Those are all my comments tonight. We have no consent calendar items. We do have three public hearings listed on the agenda and as some housekeeping for the public's benefit and for the commission's benefit. Staff is asking us to continue two of those public hearings. Public hearing item number one is being asked, staff is asking us to continue that. And then public hearing, hearing item number three, the applicant is requesting a continuance of that. So Anna, what I'd like you to do is please read public hearing item number one into the record.
Public hearing item number one, planning application 22-10, request for a conditional use permit to allow for a public courthouse at 3390 Harbor Boulevard. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission continue this item to the next Planning Commission meeting of April 25, 2022. Please note that we have not received any public comments on this item.
Okay, the chair's going to move that we continue public hearing item number one to the regularly scheduled meeting of April 25, 2022. Is there a second? Seconded by, I've got to go back to my home panel. Seconded by Commissioner Vivar. Any comments on the motion? Seeing none. Roll call, please. Oh, wait, everybody's here, so we'll just vote. I'm sorry. Everybody can just hit their vote buttons.
That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll hear that item on the 25th. And then, Anna, could you read public hearing item number three into the record? And I have those hearings correct, right, staff? Those are the ones that, okay.
Public hearing item number three, planning application 21-12 for a cannabis manufacturing, distribution, and non-storefront retail facility, direct number four, at 3595 Cadillac Avenue, Unit 102. Please note, we have received two public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made part of the record.
Okay, thank you. The chair is going to make a motion to continue this item to the regularly scheduled meeting of April 25, 2022, seconded by Commissioner Erith. Call for the question, please, vote.
I'm Chair. This is item two, correct, that you're on?
No, item three, I thought was the...
You're going to item, item three is the one that's being continued, correct?
Yes, correct, sir.
So did you move to that? I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's all right. No, no, it's always good to make sure.
No problem.
We're going to hear two tonight, correct?
You are going to hear two, so you were skipping to three. I apologize for that.
Very good, because I think he's out there and he's going, uh-oh. Okay, we're good. All right.
That motion carries 7-0.
Very good, thank you very much. Okay, those items, public hearing item number one and public hearing item number three have been continued to the April 25 meeting. Okay, that brings us to public hearing item number two then. Anna, you can read that into the record.
Public hearing item number two, planning application 21-19 for cannabis non-storefront retail use, Winter Greens, at 3590 Cadillac Avenue, Unit A. Please note, we have received two public comments on this item that have been provided to the commission and made part of the record. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Commissioners, any ex parte communications report down the line? Seeing none. Commissioner Erith, Commissioner Vivar, none. Okay. So I have Ms. Halligan on that, so who's presenting tonight on this?
We're going to have Planner, Ms. Halligan.
Teleconference in.
Oh, okay.
We can get her to go, man. She's off-site right now.
Okay, very good.
And if that doesn't work out, we've got Planner Nancy over here to the right of me, and she can help out.
Okay. Is Michelle on the phone?
Michelle, you can unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Ms. Halligan, we can. How are you tonight?
I'm good. Thank you so much for being flexible.
Sure, the airwaves are worse.
Okay, great. So good evening, Chair Deerekel and Commissioners. Planning application 21-19 is a request for a conditional use permit to establish a non-storefront retail cannabis use. Next. In November 2020, voters approved Measure Q, which allowed the city council to regulate cannabis retailers. In June 2021, the city council adopted two ordinances to amend the municipal code to regulate retail cannabis storefronts and non-storefronts. A storefront is a physical location where cannabis and cannabis products are sold, known as a dispensary. A non-storefront use is a business that sells prepackaged cannabis goods only through delivery. Both types must obtain several city approvals as well as a license from the state. Costa Mesa began accepting applications for retail cannabis uses in August 2021. Next. So the first step in the city's permitting process for a non-storefront cannabis use is the cannabis business permit application. This includes notarized statements, a business plan, a professionally-prepared security plan, and background checks for owners. After passing background checks, financial verification, and a security evaluation, planning issues a notice to proceed. Next, business owners apply for a conditional use permit. Staff from multiple departments review the CUP and create conditions of approval. If approved by the Planning Commission, the applicant can apply for building permits. The facility must pass inspections by multiple departments as well as the city's cannabis consultant. After the final city inspection, the city can issue a cannabis business permit, and at that point, they can obtain a business license. Though the business license is the end of the initial city process, the non-storefront use cannot operate until obtaining a state license. And the use is also subject to city and state inspections as well as renewal procedures. Next. So a little about state licensing. All retail cannabis uses in Costa Mesa are required to conform to the state's regulations. The California Code of Regulations pertaining to non-storefront retail uses include, but are not limited to, topics such as the licensee's responsibility for the acts of their employees, product tracking, security measures and security personnel, age verification of both customers and staff, notification of theft, loss, and any other criminal activity, advertising materials and labeling, accidents and emergencies, destruction and disposal of cannabis waste. And this may sound unusual, but it actually can expire or it could be recalled, so it's important that the state regulates how that would be destroyed. The state also regulates license renewal and revocation. Next. The proposed use would be located at 3590 Cadillac Avenue in Unit A. This 1.2-acre property is in the green zone. The existing development includes an approximately 21,000-square-foot building with landscaping and a surface parking lot. One other tenant occupies all of the other spaces on the property, and the other tenant is a cannabis manufacturer, distributor, and they recently received an MCU P approving the addition of delivery. And that was through the zoning administrator, you know, minor conditional use permit process. Next. The subject property is Zoned MP Industrial Park and is surrounded by other MP properties. Next. The proposed conditional use permit would establish Winter Greens, a cannabis delivery business in Unit A. Unit A is 9,757 square feet, of which 5,060 square feet, or 52%, would be dedicated to indoor parking. Deliveries to customers are proposed to be limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and that's in accordance with local and state regulations. The applicant's business plan and security plan were successfully evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant, and the owner passed the required background check. So note that all employees will also be required to pass a background check, but that would come, obviously, after receiving other approvals from the city. Next. So these photos were taken from the sidewalk along Cadillac Avenue. Unit A is the tenant's space facing Cadillac. Um, Unit A is the tenant space facing Cadillac. There's also roll-up doors, um, on the side that are accessible to the parking lot. Um, staff observed the property several times. I was there in, I think, let's see, goodness, August, November, December, um, definitely March and April. Um, and the property is well-maintained, and no odor was detected at the site. There is a fifty-four stall surface parking lot on the site, of which twenty-three parking stalls are available for Winter Greens employees. Winter Greens expects to have one manager and two dispatchers on-site during operating hours, and they anticipate there will be about ten drivers, so some of which may work full-time and some may work part-time. It really depends on the success of the business. Um, but as you can see from the site plan, uh, they have a large indoor parking area. Um, and because they are delivery-only, customer traffic is not allowed to the site, so that surface parking lot is available for their employees. Um, and just note that even part-time employees will have to pass a live scan from the Costa Mesa Police Department. Transportation reviewed the project and did not have any corrections or unique conditions of approval. Um, you know, they were really satisfied with this site plan. So even with all of the indoor and outdoor parking opportunities, the project would be conditioned, so if parking shortages or other parking-related problems arose, the business operator would be required to institute, um, appropriate measures. And that could be reducing hours of operation, reducing the number of delivery vehicles, or, um, limiting the number of persons allowed within the suite. So this is the first-floor plan. Um, Unit A features a large first-floor warehouse with two roll-up doors for vehicle parking, um, product loading and unloading. The first floor also includes offices, um, dispatch, driver's lounge, storage, restrooms, and a lunchroom. The second floor would include offices, storage, and a conference room. The applicant provided a detailed business plan that was evaluated, evaluated by the city's cannabis consultant. The business plan describes the owner's background, proof of capitalization, startup budget, a three-year pro forma, um, target customers, and a day-to-day operations plan. The business plan, um, contains sensitive information, so it's not included as an attachment to the staff report or agenda. It is summarized in the staff report. Um, and I would like to point out that some of the operations described include employee training, supply chain, proper inventory storage, inventory tracking, quality control, expired product procedures, record-keeping, um, vehicles, for example, they have to be unmarked, and company-owned or leased, and company insured, um, as well as details for order fulfillment. So the order for fulfillment procedures are quite detailed, um, but it's a great explanation of the amount of information that they provide in the business plan. So here, for Winter Greens, orders would be placed via telephone or a secure online portal, and in both methods, the customers must register with the company prior to placing the order. The registration process includes age verification and uploading a government-issued ID. After a registered customer places an order, the dispatcher will group prepackaged products into an unbranded package, and that is all kept in a limited-access storage area. And limited access means that only employees with a certain level of security clearance can have access to that space. So the items would be securely stored until the agreed-upon delivery window, and at that time, a group of orders would be moved to the delivery vehicle's storage receptacle. Deliveries in similar geographic areas would be grouped together to increase efficiency. Um, it's part of the state's goals for decreasing vehicle miles traveled. Um, so the, a note about that is the state allows cannabis delivery drivers to have up to three thousand in unpurchased products in their secured vehicle storage. And that way, um, registered customers can receive a digital notice, such as a text alert stating, um, that there is a driver in their area with, you know, X products available. And so that's considered a dynamic delivery approach to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Okay, the applicant provided a professionally-prepared security plan, and the city's cannabis consultant reviewed it and determined that it was appropriate. It met both state and, uh, local requirements. So some of the topics covered include, um, live scan background checks for every employee, including drivers, city-issued identification badges for every employee, professionally-installed and monitored exterior and interior surveillance cameras, um, alarm systems, and surveillance footage must be maintained for at least ninety days, and identified secured storage of cash, cannabis, and cannabis products, and sensors that detect entry and exit from all secured locations, uh, security lighting, emergency power supply, emergency equipment and training, um, driver and vehicle safety protocols, and vendor protocols, such as, um, trash and product, or sorry, cash and product transportation, um, and visitor security. So the business has to consent to local and state inspections, um, and so they've established procedures for that. Um, so as you saw in the staff report, there's, um, numerous conditions of approval, but I wanted to highlight some. So here are some of the examples of general conditions of approval that apply to a non-storefront retail use. Um, the approval can be revoked due to public nuisance, noncompliance with conditions of approval, um, or noncompliance with state law. Um, changing the operation may be subject to a zoning administrator or planning commission review, just depends on the nature of the change. Change in ownership could be subject to a minor modification or an entirely new cannabis business permit, depending on, um, how significant the change in ownership is. Um, it provides, uh, requires details on record-keeping and payments to the city, um, and submitting to city audits and no-notice inspections. Another reminder that all cannabis uses have to obtain state licenses, so there are several conditions of approval that reiterate state law for emphasis. So for example, third parties cannot provide cannabis delivery services. All delivery drivers must be background-checked and badge employees of the licensed business. Employees must be at least twenty-one years of age. Persons under twenty-one are not allowed on the premises. Um, and if the state license is suspended, and, uh, that, that automatically suspends the cannabis business operation. And if the state license is not reinstated within six months, the CUP also expires. So there are also several conditions of approval that are related to obtaining building permits to make tenant improvements. Um, for example, plans must be prepared by a licensed architect or licensed engineer. Plans should include odor control measures, and demonstrate compliance with building, fire, and other codes, and demonstrate adequate landscaping, trash enclosures, and screened mechanical equipment. There are several conditions of approval regarding things that must be accomplished prior to obtaining a cannabis business permit. Um, some examples include providing a compliance matrix, which is a table describing how the conditions of approval have been met, and passing a planning inspection, as well as inspections by other departments, providing the Costa Mesa Police Department with delivery vehicle license plates, makes and models, and confirming overall liability insurance. There are numerous operational conditions of approval designed to ensure that the business will operate safely and without impacting surrounding uses. So for example, um, all employees must pass a back, a live scan background check and wear the ID badge. The business must provide the city with a quarterly employee roster and vehicle list. Delivery vehicles cannot be parked on city streets when not in use. At the facility, all vehicle loading and unloading shall be under roof and within camera view. Any exterior loading or unloading must also be under camera view. And no cannabis products or graphics shall be visible from the building exterior. And cannabis waste, such as expired or recalled products, must be made unusable and disposed of off-site at an appropriate facility. So staff concluded that the proposed non-storefront use met the required findings for a conditional use permit. Um, the proposed use is substantially compatible with developments in the same general area, and would not be materially detrimental to other properties. The subject site is within the green zone. There are several types of cannabis uses permitted there. The other tenant at the subject property is a cannabis manufacturing and distribution facility that recently received an MCUP to add delivery. Similar to other industrial uses, the proposed delivery business would not generate customer traffic to the site, and as proposed and conditioned, the cannabis use would be compatible, compatible with adjacent uses. Granting the conditional use permit will not be materially detrimental to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, or otherwise interest to property or improvements within the immediate neighborhood. The proposed non-storefront retail delivery use would follow safety measures detailed in their professionally-prepared security plan, the conditions of approval, and state law. As required by the municipal code and affirmed in the security plan, the business shall, shall designate a security representative to be, to be available to meet with the city manager, chief of police, um, and other important staff members regarding any security or operational concerns. The business employees, including delivery drivers and part-time staff, must pass a live scan background check and obtain badges from the city. Granting the conditional use permit will not allow a use density or intensity which is not in accordance with the general plan designation. The proposed use would be based in an existing multi-tenant building in the industrial park land use designation. The previous use was light manufacturing and distribution. No additional square footage is proposed, so the, approving the CUP would not increase site intensity. As stated in the city's general plan land use element, the industrial designation accommodates a variety of industrial and compatible office uses, as well as supportive commercial uses. The use is consistent with the general plan. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution to find that the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, per Sequel Guidelines, Section fifteen-three-oh-one, Class one, existing facilities, and approve planning application twenty-one nineteen, subject to conditions of approval and code requirement. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Halligan. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions of staff?
My only question that I do have is just to get clarity that this is just for the distribution phase of this right now, and I did see that we moved it over, but I want to get clear confirmation on that, so there's no misunderstanding on that.
So this project is only, um, a type-nine delivery license. So distribution would refer to wholesale. Um, a delivery license is, is a bit different. These are delivery drivers who are taking prepackaged products out to registered customers.
Okay, perfect. That's what I wanted to hear.
And so that's the limited...
The prepackaged portion is what I was concerned with, but that's the question that I had. I wanted to be very, very clear on that. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Commissioner, Commissioner Erith, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. I don't at this moment.
Okay, Commissioner Toller?
No questions right now, thank you.
There you go. You got it.
I have one, um, small question. So there was something in the presentation that said that, um, uh, that vehicles, when not in operation, would not be able to be parked on city streets. Now, does that mean when they are not being, uh, used for delivery, as in they're just left on the street parked, um, unattended without a, um, driver, or does that mean, uh, the driver did all his deliveries and he's parked on the side of a street?
Commissioner Vivar, um, so that condition of approval, um, states that vehicles cannot be parked on city streets when not in use. And so what that means is that if they're not out on a delivery, they need to be parked to the private parking lot. So for example, overnight, those vehicles need to be stored at subject site. Um, in this case, they're intending to park them in their warehouse. The warehouse is over five thousand square feet. But I want to make it clear that this relates to where their vehicles can park when they're not in use. So you would not have, um, employees taking their cannabis delivery vehicles home and parking them overnight.
Right. And if, for whatever reason, the, um, the driver went, for example, to get lunch and, uh, left his car outside, I guess that's okay, right? That's, that doesn't have to do anything with this, um, not in use thing? Right?
So that's considered to be in use. Like, if they're getting gas, or they need a, um, obviously, they're entitled to their brakes.
Sure.
They can park the vehicle on a city street. Um, these vehicles are intentionally unmarked. They're required to be unmarked, so that a passerby would not be able to tell that that was a delivery vehicle for a cannabis business.
Right. And, um, I guess as, as I understand, that the, um, vehicles would be left, uh, in a, securely inside the warehouse when not in use overnight, right?
Correct. That's their intention. They do have the surface parking lot, and the state does allow them, you know, to park overnight. Um, with, this applicant is available, um, they're present, so they can speak more about their operation.
Okay. I think those are my questions for, for now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Russell, you have any questions?
I don't. The staff report was very comprehensive. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions. I want to start first with the topic of odor control. I'll have a question for the applicant related to that. And I'm referring to a condition of approval number four. Unfortunately, I don't see the small handwritten page numbers, uh, so I can't tell you what page number to look on, but it's the condition of approval number four, under the heading of prior to issuance of building permits. And this question is probably not as relevant for this application as it would have been for our, uh, public hearing item number three, which was continued, since that was a manufacturing and distribution. So this condition is, is, um, I guess from a performance spec, is tight, meaning there cannot be any odors detected outside the property. So understand, from a performance spec, that's what this condition of approval says. What I'm wondering is, other than, um, hope or trust, when we get plans from the applicant, how do we ensure that their tenant improvements actually address odor control? And I'm specifically asking the question here because we have a public comment that raises concerns. I don't know that I personally share those about this application, um, so maybe I'm giving you a dry run on the same kind of question I'll have on a future application. So I want to know, what is it that you'll be looking for in the applicant's plans that demonstrate to you that they have satisfactorily addressed odor control?
Commissioner Zick, with this application, they are required by the city and the state to only sell prepackaged products. Um, but it's important that we include the odor control devices here, um, because it gives us an enforcement tool, um, if there is, uh, something that goes awry. But during plan check, there are things we can look for, such as, um, carbon filters and similar devices that help, um, filter the air. And if, like, you are correct, that this would be, um, a much more substantial question for manufacturing and distribution, where they would be handling raw products. But in this case, I'll be looking at the location where the products would be stored, and ensuring that, um, there's carbon filters.
So I'll accept that answer. But if that was the answer, I got to this identical question for item number three, I wouldn't be satisfied. And when I say I wouldn't be satisfied, is I think about the individual that submitted a public comment concerned about a release of odor, or material, or contaminants, just saying that we'd be on the lookout, maybe, for carbon filtration. Again, to what level? So I'll accept that answer, but expect a very similar question in the future, and hopefully with a little more different response. The second question I have relates to condition of approval number 20. And I kind of want to just talk a bit about the words on it, I guess. The condition says, "Third parties are prohibited from providing delivery services." So I get that. The staff report on page five uses slightly different words to articulate the same requirement, and that is that delivery must be made in person by a direct employee of the licensed retailer. Now, to me, that is a much clearer, more straightforward statement of what the expectation and the requirement is, as opposed to the way condition of approval number 20 reads, which was kind of a negative. And I'm almost thinking that I'd like to see those two statements put together, so that it's abundantly clear that an applicant can't hire a separate company to do delivery, a applicant cannot hire individuals who are independent contractors who they 1099, that it actually has to be a direct employee of the licensed retailer. So could you address for me why you've chosen the wording that you have for the condition of approval?
Commissioner Zick, when I wrote the report, I had, I think, more freedom in what I wrote. I do have conditions of approval that have been reviewed by multiple departments and the city attorney. We are following state law with this one. We did keep it simple, but in the report, I elaborated more. I don't think there would be an issue with changing the condition to align with the report, especially because that condition is required by the state. If they were to operate and use, you know, 1099, or sort of an Uber or DoorDash approach, they would be in violation of both their local and state licenses.
Okay. So thank you for that. Your answer is clear. The reason why I'm kind of drilling down on this one is I had a meeting with somebody in the business—not this business, somebody in this cannabis business not too long ago. And they gave me the distinct impression they intended to have a delivery capability that they would satisfy by using a third party. So I want to be crystal clear in my mind to what explicitly we're requiring, and that is, as you say in staff report, a direct employee. But I think your condition of approval language is probably sufficient. My last question.
Commissioner Zick, if I could just respond briefly.
Sure, please.
So using third parties is prohibited both by Title IX as well as by state law. You must be direct employees of the premise.
Right. And the language in the state law says "direct employee of the retailer," or says the prohibition against third-party delivery?
I don't have the state law in front of me, but I know third-party delivery is prohibited.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. And then my last question, referencing page seven of the staff report. When you're looking at the analysis for consistency with the general plan, the policy LU 6.3 says that you're trying to continue to prioritize commercial and industrial park use of properties north of the 405 and within the airport industrial district. Clearly, this is a use that would be consistent with that intent. My question is, how is it—what action, what effort has the city made in this regard? In other words, is it just like by luck that this applicant comes forward with an industrial commercial use, as opposed to somebody coming in with a multi-story residential project? I mean, if this is what we're wanting, to prioritize commercial industrial park use there, how is it that we affect that, so that we don't have applicants coming in with residential? How do we discourage one and prioritize the other?
Well, Commissioner Zick, I think the city has really made it clear by establishing the green zone, that this is an area in which cannabis uses, which are industrial and commercial in nature, are appropriate. And when they modified—when the city council modified the municipal code, it established the delivery by C U P or M C U P in this area as well. And so that's one way that the city is encouraging industrial and related commercial uses in this location.
Okay. So if somebody came forward with a residential development in this area, we would try to discourage that? Is that what you're saying?
I would rather have Assistant Director Drapkin address that, but I would say that if a residential project came forward in this zone, they would be applying for a zone change and a general plan amendment. And so they would not be consistent with policy LU 6.3.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a higher-level policy. And I think Vice Chair Zick is pointing out that it is really even kind of a more higher-level policy than what we're dealing with in regards to an industrial use proposed in an industrial zone. But the condition is really—the intent of it is to say, preserve that there's industrial uses that go in there. And if somebody did apply for a residential permit, or any other type of commercial permit that's non-industrial, we would—the staff would require some other type of land use revision, whether it be a general plan, specific plan, or any other type of zoning code amendment to make that change. But we couldn't do it under this policy. So this policy, standing the way it was, we really couldn't do that. I circled around for that one. But ultimately, this policy is reassuring that, from a general plan perspective, industrial uses go in there. And by stating it in this staff report, we're saying, we're in compliance because the cannabis delivery is an industrial use. God, I went a long way for that. I apologize for that.
I'll accept that. I was curious how you would answer that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So I have a couple of questions. So on staff report, page three, talks about—so it talks about the permit period. It says, "Community Improvement Division, along with city staff, will conduct inspections to verify that the operation complies with all C U P and C B P requirements in that two-year How often do we think that is going to happen? And are those announced inspections?
Chairman Jerkell, so planning will have an announced inspection with HDL Companies, which is our cannabis consulting firm. And that would be announced, because we're bringing in a whole team, we're reviewing it with the plans, we want to go over the conditions of approval with the applicant onsite, look at the security plan, and go over that in detail as well. Other departments can conduct inspections without warning. And that would mainly be, like, fire department, community improvement division. So it wouldn't be up to planning. My understanding is that community improvement division is expecting to inspect on a quarterly basis. But again, it's not my department, and so I don't know for sure. I think we could—Scott might be aware, but I do want to say that my understanding is it's quarterly.
Okay. I'll have a question for the applicant about ordering. Let's move to the staff report, page four. I'm looking at fourth bullet from the top. "All commercial cannabis retail businesses shall maintain proof of vehicle insurance." What types of insurance, vehicle insurance, are requiring? Is it the minimum that all of us have to have by state law? Or is this a commercial level of insurance coverage? Which I know about, because my client makes me know about it.
Chairman Jerkell, the city has very specific requirements. They are required to carry $2 million in limited liability insurance, and they're also—they'll be signing an indemnity clause. Let's see, our city attorney can speak more to that.
Okay. I'm just going from experience. I drive my car from project sites to project sites, and my client makes me have a higher level of vehicle insurance, you know, loss per incident, that kind of thing, than the normal, run-of-the-mill person who's driving on the road. So I'm trying to get an understanding of—this is clearly a commercial operation, the operation of—I'm assuming, passenger vehicle for commercial purposes. Is there a higher level of vehicle insurance required for that use versus a general consumer?
Chair Jerkell, that is correct. They're required to provide $2 million worth of general and automobile liability. Name the city as an additional insured. In addition, as part of this—the conditions, and as part of Measure Q, and as part of a separate agreement they sign, they have to agree to defend and indemnify the city, its officers, agents, and employees, et cetera, for any—but either any challenge to this application, or for any damage of liability caused by this application, should the city ever get sued.
Okay. Then the very bottom bullet on page four talks about, "Delivery employees shall not carry cannabis goods valued in excess of $5,000 at any time, with no more than 3,000 of cannabis goods that are not already part of a customer order." So I don't know if we can regulate this or not, or if we even would want to. So let's say they go out and they sell $3,000, $5,000 worth of cannabis, and they're on their way back, they're carrying $3,000 to $5,000 worth of cash. Do we care how much cash they're carrying? Or is that just a risk that the operator takes? And I'm assuming they have all sorts of security measures in place to make sure that that money is safe until he gets back.
Chairman, that comes from state law, so this is just compliance with state law.
Okay. I just—and I'm not asking the question, saying that I think we ought to limit the amount of cash they can carry. I don't even know if we can do that. I do have a concern that we might have four or five cars, or 10 cars, or 15 cars roaming around Costa Mesa with a ton of loot in them, and, you know, people follow them, or could follow them, or, you know, who knows? So I do have some—that generally, there might be some security concerns about robberies of these vehicles, and that creates potentially a public safety—I mean, these aren't armored cars, they're vehicles, I'm sure they have—but that does create, in my mind, potential for public safety issues if one of these things get held up. So, anyway, that's just a thought.
So, Chairman, I do want to point out that the state of California allows them to deliver anywhere in the state. So right now, even though Costa Mesa does not have any licensed delivery facilities, there are cannabis delivery drivers in Costa Mesa that are following the state regulations related to the $5,000 and $3,000 level.
Okay. No, that's fine. Mr. Drapkin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I just want to—this is one that I had troubles with when my first Reader 12, and trying to figure out what it really meant. I just want to make sure that the commission understands what it really means. It's topped at $5,000, and really, that extra additional amount is $3,000 worth of product. So if they get called while they're on the road, they can deliver at that and not go back to the facility. But 5,000 max is really where it's at. So it's capped at five, but they could have, you know, up to so much, you know, to 3,000 with not already pre-ordered.
Sure. And I totally get it, but, you know—
Took me some time, so I just wanted to help out if anybody else did.
Yeah, it's just a general concern I have. It's not a heightened sense of concern, oh, my gosh, we can't—it's just, you know, until the government allows transactions to happen, other than in cash, you know, there's going to be a lot of targets out there, and I worry about that. So that's all right. Let's see. Oh, okay. I'm talking about—on page six of the staff report, second—it's first paragraph below all the bullets, it talks about—we're talking about a roster of vehicles that will be provided to the city, and everything, make, model, color, license plate number, registered owner, et cetera. And then it talks about a requirement to update that list quarterly. So what happens if, let's say, on March 1st, they turn in a list of cars? A week later, they add a new car, but they don't have to report the next—until the next—until, let's say, April, May, June, July, let's say, July 1st. They don't have to provide an updated roster, so that car could theoretically operate in the fleet unbeknownst to the city until that reporting requirement comes up?
Chairman, that is correct, but the employee driving that vehicle has to pass a City of Costa Mesa Police Department LiveScan and obtain a city badge prior to operating the vehicle.
And would that—
The vehicle itself—
Would that vehicle, in terms of its make, color, model, license plate, become known to P E D at the time of that LiveScan?
No, it would not, not in our current system.
Okay.
But quarterly roster updates is a lot to ask, and I think—and we're going to do our best to keep up with it. But right now, for us, it seems like the priority really is making sure we have all of those employees' background checked, and then updating the vehicle list in a quarterly basis.
And the requirement for the vehicle list comes from where? Is that a state requirement? Is that just a reg that the city put in place?
No. No, Costa Mesa Police Department worked with the Planning Division to come up with that condition of approval.
So that's our rule?
Correct.
Okay. So just again, general observation, and I'm trusting everybody's going to operate by the rules, you know, until they don't, which I thought everybody would in the Measure X zone, and it's—we've since found out that somebody didn't. It's strange to me that somebody could pop a car into the fleet in between reporting periods and actually pull that car out of fleet, we'd never know it was in there. And of course, the driver has to be LiveScanned and IDed, maybe the applicant can help me understand that. But it seems to me, the requirement to have a roster of vehicles, and then only have it reported quarterly, almost seems like, why would we even do that if within three months' time, somebody can put a car in the fleet and take it out, and put another one in, and take it out? Just seems like an odd kind of period of time to reporting, maybe, you know. So I don't know what the workflow of that would be like, I don't know what the workload's going to be like, but I'm just saying, it seems kind of not very effective if the reporting period is quarterly. There's a lot of room to kind of move things in and around without us knowing about it. So, anyway, that's my thought on that. On—under circulation and parking, also on page six, we talk about that the facilities, in terms of number of stalls required, is legal non-conforming, and it remains such until—if some kind of improvement was made to the structure that made it even more non-conforming. So my question is, is the loss of a legal non-conforming status limited only to when square footage is added? Or are there other structural improvements that could trigger coming in and becoming legally conforming on parking? legally conforming on parking, beyond just adding square footage? Did I, am I clear, or am I mumbling?
Yes, Chairman, this is, the use is compatible, the building is compatible, the parking is just legal non-conforming. So if there was a use proposed that generated, you know, say, an exorbitant amount of parking, for example, a gymnasium where we have a standard of 10 parking stalls per 1,000 feet, and they were required to obtain a CUP, that might be an opportunity in which we would have them address the parking issue and restripe it. But in general, having an industrial use go into an existing tenant space, especially one that has a 5,000-square-foot indoor parking warehouse, it would not trigger to modify the parking lot.
Mr. Drapkin.
To try to answer your question, Chair, to, if they, if an applicant installed a skylight or windows, or some other improvements, it wouldn't trigger a parking requirement?
No, but, if, if you add square footage to the building.
Floor area is the hit on that.
Got it, okay. All right, just wanted to make sure of that. Just a note, or a question, because I could see where it could go both ways. On the, one, two, third page of the conditions of approval, condition number 11 under planning and condition number 14 under the cannabis business permit are identical. Do we have those in there because both require it?
No, it'll be removed.
Okay. And then, on the next page over, on condition 19 of the state, it says, suspension of a license issued by the state of California shall immediately, blah, 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 shall immediately suspend the ability of a cannabis business to operate within the city. How do we find out when a cannabis operator's state license has been suspended? How do we find that out? Does the state inform us?
Yes, Chairman, the California Department of Cannabis Control is in frequent communication with us, and they do notify us of any changes. They also check in with us and ask the status of ongoing applications. They're very communicative.
Is there a, some kind of database that the city can access that, or that would, although a state database, I can't, oh, never mind. I was just wondering, apart from the state letting us know, is there some database that, that the city can access to check on the status of a, of a state permit?
Chairman, there is a state database of licensed facilities, including their status, and we can see things like provisionally approved, or revoked, or temporary, things like that.
Okay, those are my questions for now. I will open the public hearing, and if the applicant is present, ask to come down to either one of the podiums, and introduce yourself, and if you have a presentation, great, we won't limit you on time as long as you don't go more than an hour and a half.
Thank you, Chairman. We do have a, well, first of all, my name is Gary Todd Winter, I go by Todd. Thank you very much for your time on this matter. And I do have a short presentation, which is really just a condensed version of what Ms. Halligan already eloquently put together. I think she did an amazing job, and, and I can tell by, you know, the questions that you all have had, that, you know, she answered a lot of those ahead of time. But, you know, just, just so that you know who you're dealing with, who the first applicant here is, I know that's a very big deal. I was also the first applicant and successful licensee in Truckee, California, Lake Tahoe. And so, you know, we don't take this lightly. So yeah, if, if I can just go through this really quickly, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and, and my associate Wendy Lay is also here, who's an expert in regulatory compliance in cannabis. She handles for my firm all of the regulatory licenses and permit applications throughout the state. We've worked with, well, let me get into it, I guess that'll answer your question, so I've been in.
Actually, Mr. Winter, if I could interrupt you and ask if you've
Please.
read the, the staff report, and particularly the conditions of approval, and if you agree with them?
Yes, sir, I have.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
I also have reviewed and approved the indemnity agreement.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Yep. So again, I, my name is Todd Winter. I've been an attorney since 2004. It's my second career. So, live and lived and worked in Costa Mesa, my law firm is, is located here. I went through the CUP process with a CrossFit gym, so I, I can appreciate the director's comments earlier about the, the square footage and the parking. And we've been in the cannabis space for, I guess, the last 14 years, since 2008. And so I've been helping clients on the legal side navigate this industry for a very long time. So, 2008, the, what I'll call the infamous Attorney General guidelines came out for governing cannabis in California, which was drafted by the Attorney General at the time, which was Jerry Brown. And that really kind of propelled this industry forward, and it became quite messy here in Costa Mesa as well. And a lot of dispensaries popped up illegally without zoning and land use requirements. So, we, we helped clients navigate that to be on the legal side. We've only represented clients that are interested in being legal. We've helped, you know, clients navigate then the legal change once the state initiated their laws. And we've even helped municipalities throughout the state draft some of their ordinances. So, we're intimately familiar with regulatory process and requirements in cannabis, specifically in the state. So Winter Greens in Truckee was, was my first time kind of going across the desk for myself. It was, one of the hardest things I've ever had to do was take my own advice, you know, because it's a, as you can see, the list of requirements, it's a, it's a very difficult business. Not only are we taxed on our gross proceeds by the IRS, but we have all of these additional hoops that we have to jump through to make sure that everything is compliant. And we, we get it, it's, it's a, a new industry, people are concerned about it and want to keep it safe, and, and we don't take that lightly. So Winter Greens has been licensed and in business since February of 2019. We were the first one in the Truckee area, and we really like to set the, the benchmark. We are, we're, we're good stewards of this industry. You know, obviously, with my background, I think that I have even a higher requirement to do everything exactly right, and we do that in our location in Truckee. And with my ties to Costa Mesa and the, the people that we know and that we want to, you know, employ here, it was a natural, once this became an opportunity here. And so we chose the Measure X zone so that we didn't have to, I think there'll be a lot more issues that you'll have to contend with when you're putting these businesses in a non-regulated zone, and you have to look at all of the setbacks and things like that. So we really wanted to be there to avoid any of that controversy. It's already been successful for you for distribution and manufacturing, and so we really wanted to highlight, that's why we chose this particular building. So the, the, if you can go to the, the next page, I talked about that, and then the next one, please. This page really just highlights all of the requirements that I think Ms. Halligan set out in her staff report, that we, we, we are required to meet, and this building meets already. We are actually not going to do, nor, we're, we're not required to do any tenant improvements in this building. It's another reason we chose this building, it's set up perfectly for everything we do. So, once we add the necessary security and our standard operating procedures and, and all of the compliant requirements of the state, this building is, is really ready to go, as is. So that was a, a really big reason why we chose that. To touch on the delivery optimization a little bit, because obviously, we have, not only is cannabis a difficult business, but delivery is a difficult business. Our costs per order are much higher than if somebody was coming to our store. But we like the model from a security standpoint, we like the model from the way that our society is moving. You know, we have clients that have retail stores where they have 300, 400 patients per day, or customers per day, and so that's a lot of traffic. And, and so we're, we're really aware of that, and we want to limit that. So, the optimization that we've worked on with our point-of-sale system is, is really unique. So, we spoke, you spoke a little bit about the cash issue, and I wanted to address that too, because I've been one of the leading attorneys in this space to help banking come into the industry. And so, just to address that really quickly, 40% of our sales, and we're pushing, you know, to try to drive that up, are actually done through an ACH process. So, it's a cannabis-approved bank that goes through a very diligent regulatory background check, just like you all are doing for, for, for us licensees. So, they don't just open up bank accounts for anyone, obviously. You have to show your licenses, you have to prove all of your regulatory compliance. And it's a really, it's a slick program, and it's done through a text-to-pay application. So that cuts down on our cash, which is tremendous. We pay a lot for that service, but it's important, and for all the reasons you mentioned. So, so when we're out delivering, the optimization that I wanted to talk about, so the director mentioned, so we can have, currently, state laws allow up to $2,000 worth of ordered merchandise can be in the vehicle. And these are all in secure cases that are secured to the vehicle. So, when we do have cash, it would be a really difficult, I'm not saying it doesn't happen or it hasn't happened, we have fortunately not had it happen to any of us, and any of our delivery drivers in three years, but we're in a, kind of a smaller geographic area up there, so a little less crime. But the optimization feature will really cut down on additional traffic, because it's not the driver that will tell the, its customers that it has additional $3,000 available product. Our point-of-sale system, excuse me, will, it sets out a geographic area for that driver. And so once that driver initiates his or her delivery process, our website will go to show only the inventory in that vehicle for people that come, that call in from that geographic area. It automatically identifies where they're calling in from, and immediately takes them to that car's inventory to show that inventory first. And we'll, we'll discount that, you know, we'll, we'll offer incentives for people to buy that, so that, so that our drivers don't have to come back to the, to the warehouse, because that will cut down on a lot of, obviously, we all have gas issues right now, so it's a big deal. And so I just wanted to point that out, it was a little bit different than Ms. Halligan presented, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And otherwise, I mean, she did a really great job, and I think she articulated everything that we intend to do, not the least of which is, you know, try to be the best and most compliant, well, we all have to be compliant, but to be the best livery business around. And I think we have the track record to really start right off on the right foot with that here. So that's really all I wanted to say. I did want to address also the, the registration of the car issue that you brought up. So, you're absolutely right, there's no requirement that we update the state immediately, but it is a regulatory requirement, and these licenses are extremely valuable. Once you've gone through all of this, the last thing you want to do is get it yanked or terminated for something like that. So, we update our, our, the state immediately, and we're also required to have insurance, so we update our insurance immediately. We're happy to update this, the city more frequently, if, if that's something that you want to do. But from a internal regulatory standpoint, if we don't do that, and the state, if the state were to ask us tomorrow, we have to provide it immediately. And if we don't, then there are sanctions for that. So, that's, that's really all I had, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Winter, I appreciate the detailed explanation, and actually, you solved, you answered a lot of my, in fact, all my questions I had for you. So, that's good work. Commissioner Rojas, do you have any questions for the applicant?
I do not at this time, thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Toller?
I do not, thank you.
Commissioner Russell?
No.
All right. Commissioner Erath, how about you?
Thank you, Chair, no, I don't have any questions, but I want to thank the applicant for the presentation.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Vivar?
I have a couple of questions. I want to thank the applicant as well for the very detailed presentation. It's great to have more of that background information. Regarding parking, this is a question I had asked earlier to staff, but I want to ask you now directly. So, your vehicle fleet would be parked inside, I understand it, at night, and would the vehicle fleet itself be safe during the sort of nighttime, or whenever, weekends, or whenever the vehicles are not operating?
Thank you, Commissioner Vivar. I think, I think they will be safe. We will have upwards of 20 surveillance cameras with a security system in place, which immediately contacts in the event of a breach of any of the exterior of the building. Also, we'll, we'll be open seven days a week, and so the weekends aren't, you know, it would really just be middle-of-the-night sort of situations. And I think with the security we intend to have in place, as well as, I believe, you know, having other cannabis businesses in those areas with security, I know some of them have actual security guards roaming around, so I think it would be, also at the end of a cul-de-sac, might be a little bit difficult for would-be criminals to consider getaway. But I, I do believe that everything would be secure.
Do you have a rough idea of how many, how many parking spaces you'd have available inside your facility? Because I think outside you'd have 23 spaces, but I'm just curious, how many you foresee having inside the facility, and how much of the square footage you think it might take?
Great question, and it's one I've considered a good deal. So in Tahoe, we have obviously a lot of weather, which is actually happening right now, so we pull our cars in, into that inside warehouse at night, every night, not only for security, but also for weather. And we're able to get five cars into our facility there in about, we have about a 2,700-square-foot facility there, with about 1,500 of that is for, is open warehouse, and we get five cars in there. So if we kind of extrapolate that, you know, we should be able to get easily, and, and we, we do get creative, and we will be using small vehicles. So, I, I think we could get upwards, get at least 10 vehicles in there, no problem, probably 15.
I see. In terms of ordering, so some of your ordering will happen by phone, I believe, so if somebody orders by phone, will you first have them, need to have, have them filled out the online or whatever app you're going to be using for their sort of verification, and uploading the ID, and all of that? Will you have them first do that before you take the order online? Or would the attendant online be taking, would the attendant on the phone be sort of creating that profile for the, say, a first-time buyer who might not have, who might not have an, a sort of account with you guys yet? And will you guys have, like, in-house sort of call operators to handle that phone traffic as well?
So yeah, excuse me. So, no orders can take place until the customer or patient is registered in our system. That said, our dispatchers are trained to help these customers or patients navigate that system, and help them get, get everything that they need preloaded into our system, if they have time. Oftentimes, as you can imagine, we can get quite busy, and so we'll refer them to our website. And so we'll refer them to our website to, you know, go and pre-register and call us back. But whenever we have time, we will absolutely help them pre-register before. But there is, there, there can be no order in our system. It just won't, our system just won't allow it unless they're pre-registered and an ID is uploaded.
Okay.
And verified.
All right. I think I have one last question and this one is related to your vehicle optimization system. I'm not sure if I misunderstood it, but I'm just going to sort of summarize what I understood from it and then ask my question. So you're going to have a kind of application that's going to, that customers are going to be able to look at in terms of what vehicles have what, you know, which vehicles have which goods onboard and where that vehicle is in relation to the prospective buyer? And so the customer then, you said, would be given a sort of an incentive to order from the vehicle? Now, I'm wondering if that application shows, would show the exact location of that vehicle, which I think would be a security concern because, you know, obviously you can be operating unmarked vehicles, but if you have an application that shows the location of the vehicle, I, I could see that as a potential security risk. So I'm wondering if it would show an exact location on that system or just sort of a general distance away or time in terms of driving away from that individual who is looking at which vehicles have which products?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question and it's a distinction I should have made earlier. So when the driver leaves our facility, he or she has the amount, whatever amount of purchased goods and then whatever the unallocated amount is up to the total of $5,000 in their secured case. And what, what happens is if you were to call in, and actually, this only happens on our website, so it wouldn't happen on a call-in. If you were on our website, it, our, our point-of-sale system would identify you as somebody within the geographic area within which that driver is going. It would never show you where that driver is located. It would just, it would, instead of going to our main inventory on our website and our POC, POS system, the customer or patient would only see the inventory in that driver's inventory. So it wouldn't really, the, from a customer-facing perspective, they would never know that they're only looking at that driver's inventory. It's really just a website feature that shows the patient or the customer what's available and what's incentivized in their geographic area. It's, it's an optimization feature that's really transparent and the customer would never know that they're not looking at all of our inventory, if that makes sense. If you have a follow-up question, I'm happy to answer.
So you're saying if there are, say, two vehicles within half a mile away, it would show them on the phone or the website? You're saying everything that's currently onboard on those two vehicles, correct?
Yeah, we probably wouldn't have a scenario when the drivers are that close, but it would, if you were in a geographic area of a driver and you, you went onto the website to look for inventory, it would show you what, what inventory was available in that driver's case that is unallocated before it would send you to the main inventory to see if you were interested in any of, in any of that inventory.
Right. And then so, again, just so I'm completely clear, the, the customer would never have sort of access to seeing where the vehicle is sort of, sort of, you know, the way Uber or?
Correct. It would never, they would never see that. Once, if they did place an order, then it would, our system would update them with a delivery time, which, you know, they would go to the end of the queue. So there, there would be no way for a customer to find out where our vehicles are.
I see. And in terms of the drivers getting, sort of getting notified that a customer is within sort of their area and wants to buy, how would the driver be alerted of that order? Because, you know, obviously, nobody wants people looking at their phones or sort of other screens while driving. So I'm just curious how that driver would be notified of, of that order and check in a safe way, in what address they have, they'd have to go to?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, you know, without trying to give away all of our intellectual property here, the, the driver will be on task, we call it, with a, with a map, which, you know, we, we put, we use, we do use mobile phones for the apps and they'll, you know, we place them in the center console or wherever is convenient and safe for the driver to access and follow the directions. Once they complete their first task and before they go on to the next task, it downloads and shows them the, the order of their, their deliveries. And so if somebody cancels or a new dynamic delivery order has been placed, their task list will be updated, but it will be unknown to the driver until they complete a task. And they're not, they're, you know, our, our standard operating procedures don't allow them to go forward with another task until they've completed the first one. And, and they, they're not to drive off until, and once they download their second task, then they know where to go for the second one. So they don't have, in other words, they don't have 10 locations on their phone that they're trying to check off. They're going for one at a time.
Right, yeah. I just want to make sure to, you know, sort of in the, that in, in a sort of spirit of optimization, we, you know, we're not placing drivers in a potentially dangerous situation, but it sounds like that won't happen. So that's reassuring to me.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Winter, for being here.
My pleasure.
A couple of questions, a couple of easy ones first, I think. I think you said it as part of your presentation, this idea of a person going on the website to place an order, the first thing they're presented with is offerings that exist on vehicles close to them. And my understanding from what you said is the reason why that would occur is because it's cheaper for you to deliver them product that's close to them. And that part of the way you would try to incentivize them to order from that, say, shortlist of product, would be some sort of pricing incentive or some sort of thing like that. They don't necessarily know that they're going to get that in 30 minutes as opposed to 90 minutes when they're making that order, correct?
That's, that's absolutely correct, but, but it will, it will message, the messaging to the customer will be such that, you know, their delivery time would be shorter than if they were to, to order out of our main inventory, which would then require a whole new driver in situation to come back to the warehouse and deliver it. So there will be some messaging like that so that they're, they understand it will be shorter than a normal order.
Okay. And I meant to start by saying I appreciate the fact that you're bringing your business to Costa Mesa. So when I'm asking questions, I'm going to get one that I think might be a little harder. It's not intended to discourage you from being in Costa Mesa. I'm happy to be here.
No, that's quite all right. And I, we, you know, it's a very important place for me and my family and, and to Commissioner Toller's earlier presentation, I was part of the preservation of, you know, some of the parks in our area. We live at the end of Pacific Avenue. And so there were a lot of plans there to put soccer stadiums in and all that. And so I was very vocal about that. And so, you know, we love Costa Mesa and we want to help, you know, make it a great place. And plus, I have, as you all know, human capital employees are very difficult to come by these days. And, you know, we have a lot of people we know and love and trust here, so it was a natural fit. So ask away.
Okay, I appreciate that. So when I've visited several retail storefronts, one of the ideas they really push is the idea of customer experience, customer education. And so I'm wondering how you think about that with your business and to what extent you try to make up for that over the phone as opposed to in-person? Maybe you don't think it's that big a part of the business. So I'd like your reaction.
Yeah, no, I think that's a very important component. You know, coming from a sales background before I was an attorney, the, the customer experience for a delivery business is much different. Their first experience with us is either a phone call to a dispatcher or visiting our website. More and more people are becoming educated on cannabis, but we spend, you know, sometimes our dispatchers spend 30 minutes, 40 minutes talking to a new patient, especially the medical patients. We spend a lot of time with them. So, you know, it kind of comes from the top down and we do a training, employee training. Our dispatchers are, are most knowledgeable. They're, they would be akin to a bud tender in your personal experience where they're coming into a retail experience. So, and in Costa Mesa, you know, in Truckee, our market is smaller. We, you know, we have less employees. In Costa Mesa, I imagine, although we'll have a lot more competition, that we'll try to differentiate ourselves by our product knowledge and spending that time with our customers. But I will say that those are further and further few and far, farther between as this industry continues to grow. There are still new people to cannabis and we, we try to give them as much time as we can in educating them so that they're getting the right products. But we have a, you know, we've built a pretty good market share in that area and we hope to do the same here. And, and those customers have known, become to know and, and trust our brand and our products that we carry. So, you know, so those questions kind of diminish over time.
So do you see this as much of brand value, service value? Or do you see this mostly as a, just simply commodity, best price?
So it, it is a very commoditized industry, right? The very little difference between, to the, to the, you know, the novice user, you know, from one flower to the next. But, you know, when you really get down to it, there's some really subtle differences that make a big impact. And I, I'm proud enough to say that, you know, we've, I've represented some of the best of the best in this industry, from cultivators to manufacturers through my law firm. And I've really come to learn so much from them. And, and we, we offer a lot of my clients' products through our store because I, I'm so intimately familiar with them from representing them from a long time. But, but to answer your question, it's, for me, it's very much a brand, brand business. We want people to know that when they're calling Winter Greens, their customer service is going to be extremely high, the knowledge is going to be extremely high, our, our, our software and the systems that we use are going to be, you know, top shelf. And so, you know, I know there are, there, there are going to be tons of delivery. There's already a lot of delivery, as, as Ms. Halligan said, to Costa Mesa area, but we want to be able to provide people within Costa Mesa with a local brand that they can trust. So we do a lot of trademark work at our firm and goodwill and that brand value is a huge thing to our, to our non-cannabis clients. And so I take that very seriously with, with Winter Greens. We want to be the best.
So I think that partially answers my last question for you. And it has to do really with cost of business. And I can understand lower cost of business overhead being out of an industrial area as opposed to retail location. You know, grocery receipts tax is probably higher than San Ana, Long Beach. And so I understand you're in business, you're not in philanthropy. So tell me why you're locating this distribution business in Costa Mesa as opposed to across the city boundary? You don't have to answer it, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, the business mind behind that.
Sure. And yeah, you hit the nail on the head. I mean, we've been paying rent since September, so we're very anxious, you know, to move forward. And the 7% tax, the grocery receipts tax is significant. We have zero. I was successful in, you know, talking to the city council in Truckee to explain how detrimental that could be and, and, and how much these, and, and no offense, but the city taxes and the regulatory requirements, I understand why they're there for the people that aren't good stewards of this business in this industry. But it really allows the black market to thrive, really does. The higher our costs are, the easier it is for them. So, you know, with respect to Costa Mesa, we've been part of Measure X. We've worked with distributors and manufacturers to help them get permitted and licensed here. And we noted the history and we're hoping it repeats itself in that after a couple of years of success, that tax was reduced. And so we're really hoping that that happens here. But that notwithstanding, I, I wouldn't be a good businessman if I, if I didn't also calculate in the, the fact that that could not happen. So we're successful in Truckee. Costa Mesa is, you know, our home. We, we would consider our home and we have a lot of people here. And so, and we have an, an A-plus building. And so I think with, with the, the amount of people that we can service, you know, it kind of gets to a volume sort of situation, right? So we can service a lot more people here. And although that 7% is significant, combined with IRS taxes on our gross, I know I've said that before, but it really hurts, so I have to say it a lot. But, you know, we think we can still be successful here. And, you know, my plan also is to probably add another location in the Bay Area. Again, going back to your brand awareness comment. So we have a significant amount of Bay Area people that go to Tahoe regularly. So if I can have a Bay Area Winter Greens, a Tahoe Winter Greens, a Southern California Winter Greens, I think they all do very well together. And so we absorb that tax across three operations and it becomes a little bit less painful.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to tell you, I thought your logo was really cool, really clever, well-designed. I appreciated the asterisk on the presentation.
Thank you.
That was helpful too. So good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Winter, I have no questions for you. So we will open public comment on the public hearing. Anyone in, in chamber or, well, in chamber first wishing to speak to the side, please come forward. I, there's no one coming forward. Anyone on the phone or by Zoom?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll close public comment. I don't imagine there's any more questions from Mr. Winter, or he has any other additional comments. I have two questions for staff. So Ms. Halligan mentioned that the nature of the previous use for this building that Mr. Winter wants to occupy, it was a manufacturing use. Do we know what type of manufacturing use it was by any chance?
Yes, Chairman, it was, they manufactured and distributed illumination devices.
Were there any industrial chemicals or any kind of toxins used in the manufacturing process?
I am unaware.
Okay. Something to check, just for future reference, somewhere along the lines of what Commissioner, Vice Chair Zick was angling for. And then staff on, I, I approached you before the meeting on condition five under planning for conditions of approval. And I'm still wrestling with this one because it seems incongruent and maybe you've figured it out. But the condition reads, "The subject business shall comply with the operating requirements for non-storefront delivery listed in CMMC Title IX, Chapter Six, Section Nine, 495I, except for number four, which applies only to delivery conducted from a retail storefront, not non-storefront delivery." And as I read the code, nine dash four nine five I says, basically, "In addition to every other requirement of the section, every business that sells and/or delivers cannabis as a non-storefront retailer shall comply with the following requirements, including number four," which says, "Deliveries may only take place during normal business hours of the commercial cannabis retail business." So...
Right. So, Chairman, it says that they can only take place during the storefront hours. And in this case, we do not have a storefront.
Ah, okay. Well, it says normal business hours. Doesn't say storefront hours. Anyway.
So they're, yeah.
You guys can figure it out. I don't want to get hung up on it. It was just, you know, it was, it just, I, I was curious to read that section of the code and I'm going, well, and it could be that I'm completely wrong, which is absolutely possible. and it could be that I'm completely wrong, which is absolutely possible. So as the years pass, I'm wrong much more often than I used to be. So that's just something to make sure we're clear on, that the, what's said in the condition is actually reflective of the code. That's all I'm interested in. And other than that, I will close the public hearing unless there's any more questions of staff.
One short question.
Commissioner Vivar.
Just a really quick one. Yeah, I was reading the, I think it was the draft resolution, and it was talking about the background checks that would be, need to be conducted on employees and drivers. And it mentioned volunteers, which I thought was interesting. Would we really foresee volunteers at a cannabis establishment? And is there a way that also, you know, obviously there'd be control that no one over the age of 21 would be either in a vehicle or on the premises? Who is classified as a volunteer?
Commissioner Vivar, the state does allow volunteers. They are required to be over 21. No one under the age of 21 is allowed to be on the license premise nor in the delivery vehicle.
So the, a volunteer wouldn't be able to, for example, drive a delivery vehicle, employees only?
I am not aware of the distinction, but I, I, that might be a question for Todd. I'm not aware of what role volunteers would play, but I do know that state code does have requirements for volunteers. And that they have to be over 21.
Yeah, no problem.
But I mean, they wouldn't be listed on your insurance plan, so I think that would be very challenging.
Okay.
I think that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, if there is a motion on the floor, please hit the make your, make motion button on your screen, and I will entertain a motion if you're willing to make one. Okay, Commissioner Russell.
Yeah, I'd like to move that we adapt a resolution to find the project is categorically exempt from the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act per SEQA Guideline, Section 15301, Class 1, existing facilities, and approve planning application 21-19, subject to conditions of approval.
Okay, is there a second or the, Commissioner Erath has seconded. Commissioner Russell, do you, do you have any comments on your motion?
Just that I think it's, this is going to be our first, and it's going to be interesting to see how it moves forward. I'm kind of pleased that the applicant is someone who is from Costa Mesa because we, there's a little bit more comfort for me rather than somebody that is from someplace else. So I'm really pleased to, to see this moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Erath. You're the second here, do you have any comments?
No comments.
Okay, any other commissioners? Vice Chair Zick, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be supporting the motion. Actually, I don't think this is our first non-storefront delivery that's been approved in Measure X. But I appreciate your business plan, looking forward again to your business being here. The comments I wanted to make, really mostly for the record, are related to the public comments that we got and the individual that, or company that provided these comments isn't here to speak to them. One thing that was clear from your application and from the city's analysis is that the products that you're delivering are all prepackaged. You're not a manufacturing, a business, you're not extracting product, flour, oils, that sort of thing. So the idea of, of odors is maybe not a concern at all, or certainly less a concern than the manufacturing. The indication in this public comment was that their business is particularly sensitive to air quality. And of course, in their processes, they have taken appropriate measures in their facilities to deal with that. But they indicate that releases of fumes or contaminants of the air would be problematic. To me, that's not specific enough or weighty enough for me to be able to give much evaluation to it other than speak to the fact that we received comments in that regard. Also, the comment concerned that the question of substantially compatible use is raised. I can't think of a more compatible use in the Measure X zone than what you're intending to do. That couldn't be a more explicit purpose for the Measure X zone. There might be a question of the chicken or the egg businesses that were there before Measure X passed. But clearly, your business, in my mind, is compatible with the developments in the general area. So I'll be supporting the motion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So I, I think we're fortunate that our, our first CUP applicant coming forward is somebody. Mr. Winter, I appreciate your expertise and your involvement in the industry beyond just operating a delivery business in Truckee and what you've done. That gives me a lot of comfort. It's clear you care about doing this right, even though the regulatory burdens are expensive and the taxes are expensive. I agree with you. I think, this is from my own personal position, I'm not on the city council, so I don't drive the horse there. But our taxes are too high in the city on this industry, and I think that's why we, we find warehouses growing 2,500 plants illegally in the city. So I think we need to work on our taxes at some point, but I think this is a good start. I think you're the perfect candidate to kind of kick us off, and I look forward to your success here in Costa Mesa, and I'm glad you live here as well. So with that, I will call for the question. Okay, do we have all the votes?
Commissioner Toller, can you record your vote, please? That motion carries 7-0.
Okay, terrific. And so that decision is final unless appealed to the city council within seven days. Mr. Winter, good luck. Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Halligan, very much for your presentation. Okay, so we continue public hearing, items one and three, to the April 25th meeting. So that moves us on to old business. We have none tonight. We have no new business tonight, so we'll go to department reports. Public services, Mr. Yang, how are you this evening?
Very well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the Public Services Department has nothing to report.
Okay, thank you very much. Development Services Report, Mr. Drapkin.
None tonight.
Okay, City Attorney, Mr. Prezioci.
Thank you, Charity Arco. Briefly, I just wanted the commission to be aware of Senate Bill 1186, which is currently moving through the committee process. The next hearing is on 4/21, not 4/20. Senate Bill 1186 would in essence mandate that local jurisdictions allow or prevent local jurisdictions from prohibiting medical cannabis businesses from operating within their jurisdiction. They would, it would allow, as currently written, would allow cities and local jurisdictions, other jurisdictions to ban retail, storefront retail of medical cannabis. But it would mandate that a city or a local jurisdiction allow a delivery, delivery-only businesses to operate from that city of medical cannabis.
So a city could ban a medical cannabis storefront but allow medical cannabis delivery?
It, it could not prohibit a medical cannabis delivery up to a certain number of stores from operating within their jurisdiction.
Okay. Interesting. Okay, with that, we stand in adjournment to our regularly scheduled planning commission meeting of April 25th, 2022. Good night.